Monday, October the 7th, 2009. Thank you for coming in the afternoon. Normally, we're in the evening, but... And I wanted to say I'm really happy to see the windows open. It's my favorite to see the sunlight. Just turning to my colleagues around the table for disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Seeing none. Approval of minutes, September 9th, 2009, committee, the whole meeting. Do I have a mover? Councillor V, seconded by Councillor Bonagor, all in favor. That's carried. So we're right on to delegations. And our first delegation is Mary Jane Patterson, the Executive Director for REAP Green Solutions. So welcome, Mary Jane. The two of us were together on a panel a few weeks ago in Toronto with the FCM Climate Change Initiative, so it's good to see you back. It won't be quite our coffee table talk like we had there. But you have 10 minutes.
All right. Should I push this button? That makes a difference. And I'd like to introduce Patrick Gilbride, who manages our green infrastructure programs. And Patrick will be presenting some of this also. It's a real pleasure to be here with you this afternoon, here at the City of Waterloo, Chair Freeman, Mayor Dave, councillors, staff, and visitors. It's our 20th anniversary at REAP Green Solutions this year. And so what we're presenting to you is the 20th Anniversary Edition of our annual report. It's so new, I don't quite have a copy to give you in hard copy yet. So you're getting a preview, but it should be coming this week. As you know, REAP is an environmental charity. We help you live sustainably. And we do that through show, do, connect. We show you how to... Show us all how to live sustainably. Energy evaluations, home water audits. We also more and more try to do, to get the projects in the ground through work parties, through coaching people, through doing the work, any way that we can. And then we want to connect people in this work to build the movement for sustainable living. One overriding... Whoops, wrong direction. One overriding concept connects all of our work, and that is climate action. REAP Green Solutions co-leads the Climate Action Plan for Waterloo Region along with Sustainable Waterloo Region. And the City of Waterloo and the other municipalities are all key partners in that work. Last year, after unanimous approval of our 80% target by 2050, the partnership was able to get funding from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities to help us create the plan that will get us to 2050. So we're hard at work on that now. And that was when Councillor Freeman and I had an opportunity to both go to Ottawa, that was in February, and meet other partners working on their projects. And it was pretty great to have our community overall represented by one of the elected official climate champions in Councillor Freeman. Our local climate action team now is deep into creating that plan. We're in the community engagement stage now, so you may have seen our street teams out at different places, including the Global Climate Strike, right there in Town Square. And we are also now about to embark on the technical side. So this is a heads-up, councillors and staff, that will be coming for your thoughts on this. We want to garner the expertise we already have in our community and make that part of the technical plan. And we also want to ask you what the gaps are. What do you need to know more about or learn about in order to increase the capacity of our municipalities to address climate change and to put together a solid plan? Because that's one of the goals of the funding from FCM, increase municipal capacity. So we have some funding to bring that capacity to our community and teach us. You are all probably as excited as we are that it's Waste Reduction Month and it's time for the Zero Waste Challenge. Mayor Jaworski, I know you're particularly excited as a previous champion in the Zero Waste Challenge. So we want to invite you all to be part of this. This is where we take all the waste that we would normally send to landfill for one week and put it in this mason jar. Anything we can't compost or recycle goes in the jar, and it's a real eye-opener. And if you are wondering how you can support REAP's work in the City of Waterloo, one really significant way is to participate with your family. To keep peace in the household, everyone could have their own separate jar, if that's better. And then take a picture and put it on social media of you with your jar. And don't worry about a hunk of styrofoam sticking out the top or anything else. It's really about the journey and sharing our challenges and solutions with each other. So I would love to invite you all to take part. And Mayor Dave, maybe you can attest to the excitement of participating. All right. So, one more thing. I'd like to invite you all to our workshops. Some of them are in Kitchener at the Repost for Sustainable Living. We've had more and more at the Evolve Building now, up north of the university campus. And that's been kind of neat to access a whole different set of neighborhoods with our workshops. So keep an eye out for those. We've got one coming up about renewable energy for your home. And we've had some real participation from the university students in the Sustainable Lifestyles workshops there. Want to bring you up to date about the home energy evaluations. There are still incentives. They're from Enbridge now, for Enbridge customers, and a lot of people in the City of Waterloo qualify for that. We have flyers here about this. We don't really... We're not seeing as much uptake this fall as we have in the past. I think the incentives might be a bit more rigorous, but you can still receive up to $5,000 for making energy improvements to your home and have the cost of the energy evaluation rebated as part of that. So we brought flyers. We're thinking that a really good spot to put these would be the building department, where people come to get their building permits. And we wondered if that might be possible to provide those for that. Thank you. And then I'd like to turn it over to Patrick now to talk about our water programs.
Thank you, Mary Jane. At the bottom of the slide, you can see some of the work that we do on water conservation. This is works we do with the... Partnered with the region of Waterloo, but we do it in all the municipalities throughout Waterloo Region. And as you can see, over the past three years, we've done over 1,000 water conservation audits. And really, in the spirit of what Mary Jane was talking about, show, do, connect. Of those 1,000 water audits, on the right, you can see actual measures that were put into place by putting in low-flow showerheads, fixing toilet flappers on leaky toilets, and installing faucet arrators that get water savings started right away. Another aspect of our work is around, what I like to say, climate adaptation. And some of the solutions that we provide in that realm are in the green infrastructure realm. So, in the spirit of climate adaptation, one of the things we've done, you can see on the bottom row, is we've worked with neighborhoods to scale these solutions up. We actually had a workshop earlier in September in the Sugar Bush North neighborhood and are looking at potential solutions. We actually had a meeting with city staff earlier today to look at potential places for putting in a rain garden, and you can see that in the upper right. Another aspect which, in terms of climate adaptation, a program we offer is called Depave Paradise. And that's, you can see in the upper left, a program where we offer to deal with urban heat island. And we work with volunteers to take up hard surfaces like asphalt or concrete and replace it with green space and plant trees. And we've been in the planning stages with Keetway Public School in Waterloo on doing a Depave project there as well. And I also wanted to talk a little bit about some of our new programs, which I believe align well with some of the City of Waterloo's strategic plan priorities to make... Take bold action on the environment. So this is a program that we've just started up. We're piloting in Kitchener and City of Cambridge, who recently completed their urban forest strategies. And one of the things that came out of that certainly, which isn't unique to Kitchener, Cambridge, it's true across North America, municipalities are challenged in terms of improving their tree canopy because a lot of the land doesn't belong to them. So, one of the programs we offer is called our Backyard Tree Planting Program, where we'll actually work with homeowners to help them pick the right tree for the right place in their yards. So I'll turn it back to Mary Jane to talk about Project Neutral.
This is bringing us back around to climate action and what can I do in my own life? Project Neutral is an online platform that helps us calculate our household carbon footprint. We brought it to Waterloo Region this past year, and we've been working on engaging people through lunch and learns and workshops, pop-ups at events. We would be very happy to come to any events coming up for the city and/or for groups working within the city. We've had some neat response, up to 600 people now, I think, have been using this tool in Waterloo Region. And it just gives us all a snapshot within five minutes of where is my carbon footprint for my household in terms of travel, transportation, waste, food, and home. Home energy specifically. So we would be glad to bring that to anywhere in the city. I'd just like to say that this slide goes with us everywhere we go, and it's the most important slide because it shows the core funders that give us the foundation so that we can go out and bring all these other projects and funding to the community. Waterloo North Hydro is an important core funder for REAP, and we want to say how much... How very much we appreciate that support. We also want to say a big thank you to the City of Waterloo staff that we get to work with all year round. Together, we are helping people live more sustainably.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Questions? Looking to council for questions. Mayor Jaworski has a comment, not a question.
Thank you, through the chair. You know, it's always great to participate in the Zero Waste Challenge. Some years, I find, are harder than others. And I told this joke, it's not a joke. By the time you end up, you know, into day three of it, you find you're eating just apples and bananas, things you know are compostable because you're afraid to touch anything else. So one year, I did very well, I think, up until day six. And here's a lesson to you: do the wash and drying, because lint in the dryer isn't recyclable. So that's another thing that had to go in my jar. So you just have to plan, plan ahead for that. Do the wash early. But one of the challenges I found last year was trying to find a jar to put stuff in. Ended up using a pitcher, a glass pitcher. But I have good news for all of you today. Great news. Because I was out and about, and I found mason jars on sale. Now, the good news is, there's not just eight here. There's actually enough for the corporate management team as well.
Excellent.
So, good news. I know Cam's probably really looking forward to this, right up your alley. Sure. So we'll have a way to participate. We don't have any barriers to entry here this year. We'll be on there October 20th, it is?
20th is when the seven-day challenge starts. That's right.
Yes, I know. I can appreciate some have the fortitude to do it for the entire month, but we'll start with the seven day and see how we can go. So we're all ready to go with that. And we'll do a... Maybe we'll do a council picture after we're done council at 9 o'clock tonight.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Mayor Jaworski.
Thank you. And I guess I'll just say that I'm hopeful that the federal government, whoever they may be, will restore or bring more funding into play so that we can continue the good work you're doing, and hopefully you can apply for more grant money.
All right, thank you so much. So now, we have item 3B. It's student housing information. And I understand that this delegation will be led by Sylvia, and that the total... That there's several folks speaking, but that the total delegation time is 10 minutes. And so if I can just trouble you each time you speak, if you could just introduce yourself and then your residence, your city of residence, that would be great.
Absolutely. Before we start, I just have a quick question. If that's okay. The... Pardon me. The Waterloo website specified that if we had copies of documents, to bring 25 of them. So I have two stacks of documents here I'd like to pass around if possible. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, clerks. We'll be able to take care of that for you.
And Sylvia's going to be starting out by speaking.
So Sylvia, can I trouble you just to say your name and your city of residence?
Hi, my name is Sylvia Skoruch, and I'm a resident of Waterloo. So I said, my name is Sylvia Skoruch. I'm a fourth-year student at UW, majoring in French and minoring in Fine Arts. I'm advocating thousands of students on the student housing crisis in collaboration with the RSM, which is the Revolutionary Student Movement. Today, I will be talking about the surplus of students and lack of housing, outrageous high prices, student homelessness, and the problem with our system. I would also like to point out that I am actively working with Catherine Fife, MPP, and WUSA, as well as Mayor Dave, who is in the loop of things and is constantly being updated. The first problem is that there's a surplus of students and not enough affordable housing with reasonable living conditions and a reasonable commute time. This leads me to the second problem, which is the cost to rent a room or apartment, which is skyrocket high. Landlords, companies, and people subling their rooms take advantage of how desperate students were this year. Not only do we pay crazy amounts for tuition, but now these housing companies are taking advantage of us too. And if you tried asking the university for help, they would lead you to the same companies that are taking advantage of us students. Finally, we have a serious issue this year regarding student homelessness. I have received many emails and messages of students living in their cars or at the Student Life Centre, SLC, at UW, and using the public washrooms because of this crisis or because of unfit living conditions like bedbugs and cockroaches. How can a hard-working student be homeless? This is absolutely ridiculous. We are the future of society, and yet we don't even have the resources available, like an affordable housing, so that we could receive our education. Student homelessness is a concept that is completely unacceptable. Moving on to my last problem, is the resources available for students to report these issues, which involves a fee, a long period of waiting time, and a hassle? Even if the student tenant wins the case, what are they left with? The majority of the time, they still will be living in unfair conditions, or worst case, they will still not have a home. I want to point out that the University of Waterloo, Wilfrid Law University, as well as Conestoga College, rack up over 50,000 students every year, changing their overall atmosphere, environment, economy, and landscape of Waterloo. The housing needs of their students are in crisis mode, and yet it is still up to the individual student to go through the hassle of each case separately, not to mention the individual cost and the burden. So many students are in similar situations as me. So many students are passively crying and letting these bigger companies take advantage of them. Us students have so many ideas and plans ahead of us, and we would appreciate gathering as much support as possible. And now I will let David speak.
I believe Kiran's speaking next.
Or Kiran?
Oh, I'll let you speak. Oh, pardon me. We're a tad disorganized. Pardon me. My name is David Mosco. Thanks for... Thank you all for coming here to... Well, coming here in general, but also listening to what I have to say. I'm a resident of Waterloo. I live on Spruce Street. I'm not sure if this is relevant information, but I've already said it, so let's keep going. So, I'm a member of the University of Waterloo. I'm a student there, and I'm a member of a community organizing group, the Revolutionary Student Movement. I'm here to specifically address city council with the goal of finding sympathetic members of council that will help us champion issues surrounding housing in this city. I'd like to specifically address those members of council, of which I'm a constituent, Mayor Dave Jaworski, we've met before, nice to see you again, and my city councillor, Jeff Henry. Hello to you too. We're here and we're rallying the relevant institutions for systemic change. Please help us improve that our vote matters. To the other councillors present, Sandra Hammer, Royce Bodley, Angela Viet, Diane Freeman, Jen Vasek, pardon me, Tanil Bonagor, though I may not have been able to vote for you, I certainly welcome the opportunity to work with you on the matters I'm about to present. And if I'm missing anyone, I apologize. This is the information available on the Waterloo website. In Waterloo, housing prices have risen 20% since 2012, about three times the rate of inflation for several years now. This has driven many people to homelessness, as Sylvia has mentioned. It's squeezed others, and it's outright caused people to leave this city. Housing prices are obviously a symptom of another problem, this problem being the market itself. To be clear about the power dynamics at play in the Waterloo housing market, Prica Global Enterprises owns 14.3% of all housing in Waterloo. They can still be immensely profitable if they raise rents, even if not all the units in their properties are filled. The worst-case scenario for them is losing a percentage point of profit, and the worst-case for students is homelessness. I personally know several people that are or have been driven to homelessness, and I'm speaking here in solidarity with them. Due to conditions outside of my control, I've had to make this brief, so I'll dive right into the policies that we're asking for. I'd like to make a point of saying that everything we're asking for has either precedent... Pardon me. That has precedent and has tangibly increased material conditions for people in other cities when implemented. This policy is outlined briefly in the document everyone has been given. I'll start with our call for social housing. We are aware that one of the things we're asking for is legislation ensuring that a certain number of units in new developments be social housing, and that's a provincial matter. However, there's nothing stopping city council from simply developing publicly-owned social housing. This would be instrumental in setting a baseline for rent in Waterloo, driving down overall costs, and making more affordable homes for those that need it. Our next... Pardon me. Our next ask is for a homeless shelter in Waterloo. It's absurd, downright absurd, that a city of over 100,000 lacks a homeless shelter. Kitchener and Cambridge have shelters, but the conditions are so bad that homeless people have said they'd outright prefer to sleep on the streets. Waterloo students I've spoken to have said the Kitchener shelters are unsafe and too far away from campus. Per the 1948 UN Declaration of Human Rights, signed by Canada 81 years ago, housing is a right, and it's damn well time we acted like it in a sincere and meaningful way. One of the catalysts for students organizing as we are now was a leak of over 6,000 accommodate use maintenance requests. I reviewed nearly every single one and compiled them in a package that's been handed out to you, showing really the systemic nature of abuse at play. Excuse me. To help remedy these issues, we have two proposals. First and foremost, we want proactive enforcement of the laws requiring landlords to make repairs. We've been told this is impossible because inspectors can't simply break down people's doors. But of course, this has never been what we suggest. The policy is based on a Toronto policy, where property standards inspectors would announce well in advance to tenants in an apartment building they'll be present. This gives tenants the opportunity to be present when property standards inspectors come by and invite them in to issue work orders. Excuse me. This allows work orders to be issued on the spot, completely circumventing the long bureaucracy that prevents people from getting the issue dealt with. It's also prudent to pass a legislature mandating only finished rooms can be rented. As we've seen multiple times in the city the past few years, buildings not being finished in time for students and leaving them stranded. Frankly, this law seems like nothing more than common sense. Tenant associations are a powerful way tenants can organize and have defense for their rights and needs. They can help tenants with legal services and generally vastly improve the conditions tenants are subjected to. We understand the onus for the formation of tenant unions falls on the individuals themselves, the individual tenants themselves, but there are many ways the city can help facilitate their development, growth, and creation, outlined between lines 74 and 86 of the Waterloo Housing Issues Document. Lastly, again, the cases presented... In the cases I've included, from the accommodate use data leak, show consistent and repeated negligence. The news articles mention... The news articles that came out about this, pardon me, mention investigating perpetrators behind the hack, which is understandable, as that was against the law. But there has been zero mention of consequences for the illegal handling by Prica that occurred in that leak. Let's investigate the perpetrators and prosecute them where it's applicable. Thank you very much for your time.
And you have three minutes remaining.
My name is Kiran. My residency is at Waterloo. My housing story is not different from other students' stories. It begins mid-August, as my residency at housing at the University of Waterloo ended, and it didn't really end until two days before I would have officially become homeless. From two weeks before my residency at the University of Waterloo storms ended, and the two days before I became homeless, I was randomly searching for housing. Every website, listing, and posting on Facebook, KIGI, and University of Waterloo suggested listings. I've proofed that I have contacted no less than 200 different listings, and I only managed to find one place where I could actually stay. There was barely time to eat between searching for housing, messaging them, and then crying when I couldn't find housing after two hours straight of being unsuccessful each time. I ended up failing in class because I couldn't... I didn't have enough time to finish a final paper for the class that the professor graciously extended the deadline on. Because I couldn't spend the time working on it, I needed to find housing. How are we, as students, expected to be successful if we have to undergo the pressure of worrying about having our dreams crushed every three months, semester after semester, year after year? How can we expect students to succeed when people like me had to sleep on a bag of their dirty laundry as a makeshift pillow because their Airbnb didn't confirm that late at night? That time was 9:00 PM. How am I expected to succeed when I have to endure this every semester? My story isn't unique. My friends with similar stories isn't unique. It's time to change what has become the norm.
I believe that's all we had to present. If anyone has any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just turning to council for questions. All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. We really appreciate the information that you left with us, as well as the information that you shared with us at the podium. Oh, okay, great. Thank you. You can have a seat. So Mayor Jaworski has a question of staff?
Yeah, I think Mr. Turner's here, and I was wondering if I could ask him a question. So Mr. Turner's our Director of Municipal Enforcement Services, and one of the key things that we do offer is through our Property Standards Bylaw, an action that your group can take. Maybe you could recap a bit of the actions that... What you've seen, what actions can we take? And just as another promotional opportunity, that when I met with these students back on September 26th, that, you know, one of the things was getting the message out there. And I know we've updated our webpage, your staff are available. Maybe you could just recap, what are some of the things we can do? What are some of the complaints we've seen, and what have we been able to do about them?
Certainly, through you, Chair Freeman. Just to start at the beginning, in terms of what our authority is, our Property Standards Bylaw does deal with a multitude of building maintenance issues, whether it's the inside of a unit or the common areas. The one delegate was correct in that we can't enter a dwelling unit unless we're invited. The way that we've tried to get the message out there is through updating our webpage, but we've also been in contact with both student unions, as they seem to be, in my mind, the closest conduit, or the strongest conduit to the student body, offering information as well as offering to attend workshops. I understand, I wasn't connected or contacted directly, but I know Commissioner Dykstra was contacted about setting up one of those workshops, and certainly we'll have staff there to engage with the students and explain what the process is. A complaint leads to an inspection. The inspection, if there's a violation, would lead to a work order, and certainly the consequences of the work order is if it's not complied with, then we have the ability to either prosecute or do the work and bill it to the property owner. So that's, in a nutshell, that's what our level of authority is. I think the key piece is making sure that residents of the city understand who to call for what, whether it's students or the elderly or whatever. And, you know, certainly we'd be open to meeting with the group. We've talked before during their one attendance here a couple of weeks ago at City Hall. We felt at the time, the students' union, our unions, were the best conduit to reach out to their membership. So we're going to continue forward with that, but we're certainly open to other discussions if council so chooses.
Then in terms of turnaround time and response time for, let's say, they have friends here who have issues that might be longstanding, they haven't been aware of our services, if they were to contact us, what sort of turnaround time do we have? And how many complaints have you seen in the past few weeks?
Typically speaking, with regard to the turnaround times, the turnaround time would really depend on how quickly we can get in contact and arrange an inspection, again, because it has to be an onsite inspection, obviously, with the occupant of the unit available. Usually takes a couple of days from the receipt of the complaint to set up that particular appointment. The time for compliance on the work order would depend on the nature of the work. If it's a serious repair, then it might be longer than a minor repair or several minor repairs. So the extent of the work order dictates the timeframe. In terms of the... Most recently, we've been keeping track of problems, particularly in the larger apartment buildings that are predominantly student buildings. And I believe in the last month, we've received five or six complaints. That would suggest to me that perhaps more information on how to report complaints needs to get out to the public or needs to get out to the student unions that way.
Thank you.
Councillor V has had a question, and Councillor Bonagor?
Through you, Chair Freeman. Not so much a... Well, maybe a question. Anyway, I want to thank you guys for coming today, because in my ward, I'm dealing with this a lot. There's... And I think there's a real need out there for tenant... There's, and I think there's a real need out there for tenant education or tenant awareness or, you know, and we, we've talked about this in my ward, about having, setting up a tenants', a tenants' group, but we need, we need leadership on that. We need people that have the, the knowledge, and, and we need, it needs to come from the community. The community needs to come out and say, this is what we need. And, and there are organizations, including the region, and I know the police as well offer advice and, and information for, so I think it's about being educated about what your, what your rights are as a tenant, because there are a lot, and not just, and not just su, not just students, there's a lot of families that are living in, in not great conditions either, and, and just don't know how to get or how to, how to articulate what they need in their, in their homes. So anyway, just, I don't know whether the city, I know the city's involved in a lot of, in my neck of the woods with a lot of the tenants as well.
Certainly through you, Chair Freeman. It really starts with the education piece, making people feel, or, or give them the knowledge of what the process is and where to report. Sometimes it's also an issue of being concerned about what the backlash could be. Certainly we have laws in Ontario that are very strong in terms of any sort of retribution for, for complaints that are valid. The city, we've, we've worked at, certainly in your neighborhood and other neighborhood, with other neighborhood associations. I'd also like to indicate that Waterloo Region Community Legal Services will offer advice to, to tenants as well on, on landlord-tenant issues that are outside the jurisdiction of the city.
And Counselor Bonagor.
Through you, Chair Freeman. First, I'd like to thank the students for coming in and speaking with us. This is a really important issue, and we share your concern. The fact that students are even within sniffing distance of not having a home is horrendous. And I, I can't imagine the, the mental burden that that must place on you when you're already doing your best at school, which is already hard enough. I'm also heartened to see MVP Catherine Fife here to hear this as well. The province and the city will be working, we need to work together to help try and solve this. Mr. Turner, I do have a question for you, just regarding one of the suggestions from the group of students. So they were speaking about proactive regulation or where maybe bylaw could come on a certain day, and that day could be, people could be made aware of it in advance so that they have the opportunity to invite you in should they wish. But you're, if I understand correctly, you're saying that you, your team responds to, like, individual requests, is that correct?
That's typically the case, through you, Chair Freeman. Typically is the case that we need to be invited in. You know, certainly the suggestion today about canvassing a building is something that I would want to consider. I mean, it's, it's not something that we've done in the past. I'm not saying it's not doable, it's just not something that, that we've done, and I'd, I'd want to reach out to our colleagues in other municipalities, see if they've done that. I think the key piece of this is making sure that, that what, in whatever form, we've got the ability to, to provide the information to the students to contact us. The, the student, again, I, I'm repeating myself, but the students' union seemed to be the, the most appropriate conduit until I, I've learned of, of an organization that now has a name. Today I wasn't aware of that one, I spoke with them a couple of weeks ago. But the, the suggestion by the delegate is something that I would need to wrap my head around and make some inquiries on, and see how successful that's been in other municipalities.
And while you do think, while you are considering that, if you wouldn't mind considering whether, if, if a group of residents from a building asks you to do this for them, whether that would fulfill the, you know, by request?
Yeah.
Aspect.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I had Counselor Basak, and I see you, Counselor Henry.
Thanks through you, Chair Freeman. Also, thank you to the students for coming in advocating this is really important work that you're doing. So thank you for bringing this to our attention, and the, like, the passion with which you spoke, and the anger with which you spoke, and these, which is great, it's excellent, and for these suggestions. So I just have a couple of questions about a couple of questions as well, and maybe an update. So one would be the side, number five, this idea of investigating large landlords. So I am curious how that data is tracked, like, are the, the companies tracked when a complaint comes in? And if so, what does that look like? And are there any mechanisms in place where, if there are one or two landlords that repeatedly come up, how does the city address that? What are the best ways that that can kind of stop?
Through you, Chair Freeman. There's a couple of ways to answer that question. One is, first of all, we, we only, we, we track complaints by address, not by the property owner themselves. If we find that there's a particular area where we're getting a, a lot of complaints, whether it be a neighborhood association as, or a particular area within a ward, as Counselor Beath, Beath alluded to, that's when we would step our, step up our outreach. But in terms of tracking landlords, to your specific wording, we don't do that, we track complaints by address, and then we'll react to the number of complaints we get to an address. The, the fallout from that, if I could, if I could use that term, with regard to, say, a number of complaints against one particular landlord, the one trigger that we have for certain classes of rental buildings is our license. For certain classes of buildings that, that are required to be licensed, there is a mechanism within that licensing bylaw to hold the landlord accountable if there's multiple infractions of a variety of things. But that doesn't, as council well knows, doesn't apply to all rental buildings in the city.
Okay, just if, I do have another question, but just to follow up to that. Okay, so here I'm, I'm seeing that it's a, a company that likely, I don't know how all the branches of the company work, likely is going to come to council and ask for maybe, like, show, for approval for their, for their developments. So I'm thinking, okay, so here we have this information about builders who are building places that students are living in, coming to the city and saying, these are not safely, I'm not, not only can I not find housing, when I do, it's inadequate and woefully inadequate, and we're going to get requests to approve these, these permits for, for more building that may contribute to more of this. So how do we, as a city, I don't know if this is a question for you, Jane, this is mostly just a statement of how do we make sure that this isn't something that continues on and on when we have this data in front of us and we have these people speaking to it in front of us?
Through you, Chair Freeman. That's, that is a question that, that I wouldn't want to address without speaking with the divisions and, or departments that provide that approval process. That, that really would be something that, that we'd have to collaborate on.
Thanks. And then my other question was about your point number one, about what's basically inclusionary zoning, a particular amount of, percentage of units or, for affordable units. So there is a, a joint committee somehow with the City of Kitchener and the City of Waterloo, so I was wondering if maybe, could we get an update about how that work is going or where it's at right now? Is that possible?
Through Chair Freeman to Counselor Basak. I don't have that information right at hand, but I can certainly, before the next council meeting, or provide a briefing note exactly the timelines of where that project is with the City of Kitchener. But I'm sorry, I don't know exactly tonight, or this afternoon, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. Certainly a lot is being said, I won't repeat it. I think everybody's time is, is valuable, and if you're here today, you're not somewhere else. And I know there's always somewhere else to be and something else to do. So I, I think it's, it's helpful to, to have organization of, of interests come together because mutual support is, is important in these circumstances, and is in fact, some of, local organizing is some of the best way to be able to get action and drive and support driving enforcement activity. I think, as, as folks have heard from Mr. Turner today, we rely on folks on the other side of the door to be able to let us know there's a problem there and to facilitate our ability to, to get there. So the more, the more folks that are engaged and organized in that process on the other side of the door, the easier it is for the resources we have to be able to be brought to bear on, on those concerns. So I, I appreciate that there's now opportunities to have further discussions on that and see, see if ideas akin to, you know, you use the term task force, but, but akin to being able to, to go into specific areas because you know you're going to have a bunch of people who are ready to open doors, is, is a gap that we've had, and if we're able to close that gap and get in, that's very helpful. Because then it generates more data, which then helps create, create a circulating pattern that, that helps root out some of, some of these challenges. I mean, we've, we've had those in some places in the city in the past, over the half-century that we've had growing post-secondary institutions here, and some of those cycles have been successful because we've had, we've had that organization, that conversation. So we need to do that again, and we need that to happen anew. I just wanted to highlight a, a couple of things as, as well for, for information. Counselor Basak has, has raised the inclusionary zoning piece. I know what we were waiting on after the new provincial government took over were regulations so that we knew what the heck we had to do to make it work. And if those were published, they were published only at the end of August, I'm not sure if that was a complete publish. So we've got some work that we have to do, and we'll hear more. But we've been ready to go for a while, we just have had nothing to be able to work on because we don't know how to work on it under provincial law. But once we got that runway, we can go and get it done. And the other thing, I know that, you know, Ms. Fife has sent out a letter that, that we've all seen, identifying challenges at the landlord-tenant tribunal and all of those. You know, we, we wrote a, a not-too-dissimilar letter a couple of years ago under the prior government. I, I wrote it, Mayor Jaworski signed it and sent it, identifying a huge access-to-justice issue for, for folks in, in our community, students, students included. That's, that's certainly something we're, we're glad to see further advocacy happening on, and I know the mayor and I and others would be, would be happy to work on follow-ons to that to remind the new provincial government that these are still issues. We know they are occasionally issues for landlords, we know that they are issues for tenants, and only, only resources to that board will allow timely resolution of those matters so people can get on with their lives. So that's something we're happy to continue advocating for as well.
Counselor Bodley.
Thank you through you, Chair Freeman. There's a question, I guess, for, for Mr. Turner, is sort of tying together a couple of the conversations from Counselor Bonagor and Counselor, Counselor Basak around the proactive investigation of large landlords and how this compares, I guess, to our current rental housing bylaw for smaller units. Would you, in, in having looked at some of the, some of the complaints that have come through, would you classify some of those complaints as things that would have been caught by our rental licensing bylaw on a smaller property? That does not exist because we don't, we don't require a license for larger properties?
Through you, Chair Freeman. Yes, there are certain categories of, of complaints that would be caught on a proactive inspection of a, of a, of a rental property. Typically those things that would include the common areas. Again, the issues inside of a dwelling unit, even with the rental licensing bylaw in place, we need the occupant's permission to enter. So a proactive inspection for licensing purposes does not include the, the interior of a dwelling unit unless the, the occupant invites us in. It's, it's not mandatory on their part to, to let us in. So some of the complaints or some of those problems, if they existed at the time of an inspection, would have been caught.
And I wonder if maybe we could go back in time a little bit to when the rental license bylaw was put into place for these smaller units? Would you suggest that part of the justification for implementing that rental license bylaw was because we were seeing this level of complaints from the community on those types of properties and that we were not regulating them, I guess, appropriately?
Through you, Chair Freeman. Fortunately or unfortunately, I was just south of the border when the rental licensing bylaw was developed, but I certainly had, had occasion to review it and understand the process that it went through. I would say that maintenance standards would have been one of several factors that contributed to the, the development of the licensing bylaw. It also included construction without a permit, fire safety issues, houses that were not intended to be rentals, converted to rentals, so there was a multitude of factors. I think that each one of those factors has to be weighed. Maintenance concerns would have been one of them. Fire safety, I believe, was one of the, the more significant ones because you're now taking one unit, dividing it up into four without the proper fire separations and that sort of stuff, that you typically would re, what you would require under the Ontario Building Code and the Fire Code for high-rise buildings.
Thank you. And I guess, just, just a comment, I, I'm not necessarily suggesting or advocating that we necess, that we need a rental housing bylaw on these larger properties, but maybe I would hope that some of our large renters in the community are taking this as a bit of a warning. I know around this council chamber, we are, around the horseshoe here, we have asked students to hold, and we've, we've tried to hold students to account for certain things that are happening in our community that we don't like. And if, my perspective is that if these things are not handled appropriately, that we may well be asking these large rental properties owners to also be held to account if these problems continue to come around. I'm, I say that not very, with, not lightly, because I under, I also understand that if we were to implement something to that effect, that to the other part of the delegate's point, that we're, we're essentially talking about increasing pricing for housing. Your shirt's loud enough there, Jim, you don't need your phone. Completely lost what you're in a thought, but I think, I, I think my point, my point stands, thank you.
Certainly, if I could, through you, Chair Freeman, just address that one point. Certainly the accountability piece goes both ways. I do know that it, that we've had reactions from landlords or property owners that have been on the receiving end of, you know, quite a few work orders. So sometimes they'll reach out to us, and sometimes they're not happy when they reach out to us, certainly, but, you know, it does, it does help us with the dialogue. So I mean, that is one mechanism. Certainly if we thought that there was a particular trend in, in, in an area or a building, there's nothing that precludes us from, from talking with the landlords. That way it's a question of exercising our authority, and our limit of our authority is issuing the work orders on the specific problems.
Anyone else wanted to add to that? I just had one simple question. As, as part of our ongoing bylaw work, is there, is there any changes that you can think of that, or tools that this council needs to bring to your department that you could be more effective in terms of responding to this? Or is the, is the bylaw in its extent meet the needs of the department right now?
To you, Counselor, or Chair Freeman, I believe the bylaw itself is sufficient. The issue is about education and the ability for us to use our resources to target a particular area, and that's where the dialogue happens. If we know that there's a large, a problem with a particular building or a particular neighborhood, certainly we, we have already, I don't want to use the word target, but we focus some resources that way. So I, I think the legislation or, or regulations themselves are, are solid, because it does cover a multitude of maintenance issues. I think the real issue is, is about the communication and the education piece.
And I just had one question from Mr. Rapp, if that's okay. It's, it's with regard to, when, when looking at some of the summary of cases provided from a accommodate U, it, I, I had this sense that maybe some of these buildings are new, and it would seem odd to me that the heating and ventilation units aren't working. And so I just didn't know whether or not this is something that, from a building standards perspective and our, the ongoing work that we do through building standards during a construction phase, whether there's some lessons to be learned from this.
Certainly, Counselor Freeman. Prior to final inspection of these structures, particularly where we're informed or we have information that is leading us to believe or suspect where some units are not working, then we can ask for further verification before the final inspection is completed. Most of those structures are, we don't inspect them ourselves, we rely on signed-off documents by professionals in that field, as most municipalities do. We rely on signed-off documents by professionals in that field, as most municipalities do, but we can confirm, as I said, particularly where we've been led to believe that there could be a failure of systems, to confirm that they're operating properly. Absolutely.
Thank you. Was there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, so that brings us on to presentations. And our first presentation is with regard to council education session on community and neighborhood services. And I guess, Beth, you're gonna lead us through that. Welcome.
Thank you very much. As Counselor Freeman, Chair Freeman noted, my name is Beth. I'm the manager of community and neighborhood services. I have been working at the city for nine years, but back in January, started in a new role as manager of this team. And since I started in that position, in this new position, I have been asked many, many times, what does community and neighborhood services mean? What exactly is it that you do? My parents have asked me that, my friends, residents, when I give them my new business card. And it's a complex answer because we're a very diverse team that does a lot of things. And there honestly hasn't been a day since I started in this role nine months ago where I haven't been surprised to learn about something new that my team is working on, a way they're helping the community, and a way they're making positive change for our residents. So a few months ago, we moved over our offices from the REC Center to City Hall. And not surprisingly, as he happens to do from time to time, the mayor popped by my desk, and he started asking questions about what we were working on. And he said, "Maybe it would be a good idea for you to come to council and give us an overview of what your team is working on." And so that's what we're here to do today. And I'm not going to actually talk very much at all because I'm going to pass it on to my team members to speak about what they do. But basically, today, we wanted to give you a bit of insight into what the community and neighborhood services team does, specifically what services and programs we manage, our approach to working with the community, what projects we're working on now, and what's coming up. And to remind you that the work we're doing is very much connected to the new strategic plan, particularly the pillars around healthy communities and resilient neighborhoods and equity and inclusion. So you'll see a lot of connection back to those elements of the strategy. Here's just a quick org structure of the team. I have five direct reports. Darren, our coordinator of sports and recreation. Pam, who's the coordinator of community outreach. Julie, who's our coordinator of neighborhoods. Amy, behind me, who is our neighborhood development coordinator. And Nadia, who is our relatively new policy analyst. She started a couple of months ago. In addition to having direct reports, we work really closely with Lynn, our community support administrator, who works in the community programming and outreach division. And we also, through a purchase-of-service agreement, work with staff at the city of Kitchener who provide inclusion services for persons with disabilities for us. My counterpart, who's responsible for that, Lorianne Palibeski, wasn't able to be here today, but her entire team is. So we have Lolita, Marina, and Nadine here with us today. And I'm going to turn it over to Darren for him to tell you a little bit about what he does, and we'll go through our team, each of them taking a few minutes.
I'm Darren, the coordinator of sports and recreation. A key objective in my role is to support 35 affiliated minor sport organizations to ensure sustainability and delivery of sports and recreation programs to the youth in our community. Some key responsibilities involve working with the various leaders of the affiliated organizations to support strong nonprofit governance, help with problems, and help with problem-solving, and providing guidance and support where necessary. I also participate in policy and planning projects by sharing perspective through sports and the various groups. For example, diamond upgrade planning and allocation policies. I also manage affiliation policy requirements, including service agreements related to affiliated sports organizations. Some projects and initiatives that I am currently working through is a fall workshop. So I will be communicating out to the groups very soon about a delivery of a workshop that will focus on volunteer recruitment and retention. Outdoor sports field strategy, specifically around diamond upgrades. I am a part of a working team playing a key role in providing information and sharing from the sports perspective. The 2020 Community Cash Grants, this will actually be my first year being involved in the cash grants process, so I'm looking forward to that and learning more about that process. And service agreement renewals, which ties into the club's affiliation with the city of Waterloo. This involves sitting down with each club and the leadership of each club, and as their service agreements come up for renewal, and updating and specifying mutual responsibilities and moving forward for the next two to three years. When I think of the community impact of my role, I think back again to working with the 35 affiliated clubs to see the impact that they have on the community through providing the youth an opportunity to recreate and have a wide range of different sporting opportunities to choose from, along with building new friendships and being healthy and active in our community. As you can see from the slide here, this just captures just a small portion of different sports that I would be connected to in my role. I also think of some other sports that maybe you don't necessarily think of right off the top of your head there in terms of fencing, gymnastics, track and field, judo, karate, and all many other sports that these clubs are doing a wonderful thing for our community. So I will now pass it on over to Pam, and thank you very much.
My name is Pam, and my role on this team is community outreach coordinator. The objectives or purpose of my role is to support organizations and community-driven initiatives that focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, or DEI for short. I also work with internal city colleagues to encourage consideration of DEI in city planning, policy, and service delivery. In terms of my responsibilities, I'd say that the work I do falls into three buckets or categories. The first involves acting as a liaison between the city and community-based groups that represent individuals from equity-seeking groups. So for example, I connect with the Rainbow Community Council here in our community, which represents LGBTQ+ interests. I connect with the Immigration Partnership, which is focused on the contributions and needs of immigrants and refugees in our community. And I also connect with staff at Satyjarota, or the Waterloo Indigenous Student Center, as a way of building relationships with the local urban indigenous community here in Waterloo. So what does it mean to be a liaison between these groups and the city? So one piece of this is to connect the groups to ways in which the city can support their work. So that may be helping them through a grant application process, working with them to identify in-kind supports that we could provide, that sort of thing. And then another piece is bringing a city perspective and some of the expertise we have here at the city to the work that these groups do. So for example, I might be in a position to provide some advice on how to recruit volunteers to the work that these groups do based on some of the practices that we put in place here at the city. So a second bucket or category then is supporting internal diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. And that would entail policies, practices, and procedures that impact the experience of staff working here at the city. And finally, I also work in the area of providing advice to staff on diversity, equity, and inclusion matters. And this is based on what I learn from community members about their lived experience, as well as principles that we find in the Ontario Human Rights Code. There are a number of current initiatives and projects that I'm working on. So right now, I'm working alongside internal colleagues to develop an action plan based on the findings of our internal staff diversity census and inclusion survey. I know that you're all familiar with the Powwow hosted by Satyjarota and hosted or held in Waterloo Park for the last four years now, I believe, and I know that I saw a number of you there a few weeks ago. So right now, we're working on exploring affiliation between the event itself and the city to help just formalize that relationship that we have with the folks who organize that event. The Red Scarf Project is a display that Aqua, the AIDS Committee of Cambridge, Kitchener, Waterloo and area, coordinates to raise awareness about HIV. Last year, in December, the WMRC hosted a display of these red scarves, and I'm currently facilitating a connection between Aqua staff and our staff to bring that display back to one of our facilities again this year. The Waterloo Region Equity Consortium, or REC for short, as it's noted here, is a group of staff from public sector organizations across the region, all of whom have a focus in their work to do diversity, equity, and inclusion work within their organizations. So right now, we're in the very beginning stages of planning an equity symposium to take place here in our region, and our target is spring 2021. So we have a ways to go on that work, but we are beginning that now. I'm also working with internal colleagues across the city from many departments and divisions to develop our responses to the calls to action of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. And you're going to be hearing more about that in the coming weeks here at council. And finally, we're defining how to allocate funding to support all of this work by way of our current budget process. And to show the impact of this work in the community, I want to tell you a little bit about the Safer Spaces project of the Breaking the Silence Working Group. So the Breaking the Silence on Hidden Violence Working Group, or BTS for short, is a subcommittee of the Rainbow Community Council that focuses on bringing awareness to and addressing the issue of violence against the LGBTQ+ community. Between fall of 2017 and fall of 2018, the BTS hosted three community conversations, one in each city across the region. Each evening started with a presentation on the findings of the Outlook Study related to victimization and community safety. And in case you're not aware, the Outlook Study was a needs assessment survey of LGBTQ+ folks in Waterloo region done in 2016. So some of the attendees at each of these events had actually completed the Outlook Study, that survey themselves. So this provided an opportunity for them to hear more about a piece of research in which they'd actually participated. And following the presentations, then, participants were invited to reflect on what helps them to feel safe in our community. And you can see from the photo here that the BTS invited further feedback on this particular topic at the Tri-Pride Festival just this past June. The attendees were invited to share places that they felt safe in our region by writing or doing a drawing on a door that had been prepared, actually with the help of staff from the KW Art Gallery, so another partnership that came into this as well. And it's now a piece of community art that the BTS can share at community events. So the city of Waterloo was able to contribute to this initiative via my time as a resource person on the working group, as well as some in-kind contributions to the events. And at this point, the BTS group is still working through how to synthesize and share all of the information that was gathered, but I would say they have a really good starting point now, which will help to paint a picture of what makes for a safer space for LGBTQ+ people in our community. And at this point, I'll hand it over to Julie.
Good afternoon. So most of you know me probably from your neighborhood associations, out at community events, or projects that your residents are doing, but I am Julie. I'm the neighborhood coordinator here at the city of Waterloo. So really, my role here is to support neighborhoods who are the heart of our community and doing all that they can to create welcoming, inclusive, and vibrant communities. So part of that involves working with our affiliated and non-affiliated neighborhood groups, so over 25 groups of formalized residents who are getting together on a regular basis to put some plans into action. It also includes groups of residents who are interested in doing something, or people who have projects in their neighborhoods that they'd like to connect about. I help with different types of things that I can be assistance for as a liaison. So sometimes it's communicating city news out to those groups. Other times, they're asking for advice on the best way maybe to implement certain practices or do certain projects, and also problem-solving along the way as those go into implementation and throughout the different stages. I also work with a number of community partners in community organizations. So for example, the Volunteer Action Center, House of Friendship, Horizon, these are all other community organizations that help make our neighborhoods and residents in the places that we live better. So for example, the Volunteer Action Center often can assist neighborhood associations, maybe they're looking for some help to better improve their volunteer descriptions to get more recruitment for volunteers or things like that, their specific resource. House of Friendship helps particularly quite a lot in the Lake Shore South community, where they work at the Sunnydale Community Center and have an outreach program there. I also collaborate with other city departments throughout all of these different processes and programs and projects. So often, things happen in community parks because that's where neighbors have an opportunity to gather. Could be things such as connecting with our municipal bylaw department about maybe some more information on a particular bylaw or issue. Other things can be new developments in neighborhoods and wanting to be better informed about the process of that. So currently, I'm working on all of the interactions with all of our different neighborhoods. Some of the particular projects include a community fireworks toolkit. So this is actually to help communities that are interested in doing community fireworks understand what that entails, what are the different processes that involves, and who they need to connect with along the way, a process to help them through that. Also, working with our outdoor rink program and community vegetable gardens to have a volunteer appreciation process put into that. So last year, for our outdoor rinks, we tried an outdoor rink dinner and asked for some feedback if people thought that was a great way to bring people together and recognize what they're doing for the season, and there was really positive feedback. So we're looking to implement something like that with our gardens as well, just to say a small thank you for all the amazing work that they do on those projects. We also have the Neighborhood Matching Fund Fall Deadline coming up, so October 23rd. If you know any groups that are interested in applying, please feel free to direct them to me for questions, and we're looking forward to all the projects that we get in for that and helping the volunteer committee make some decisions on what they will be funding for this round. In Lake Shore North, there is a new community garden that will be going in in Pine Brook Park. So this fall, they've chosen to do an in-ground model, which will mean fall implementation for that, and then in spring, they'll be planting for the new garden for the first time. And in Vista Hills Community Association is a new affiliate, so they'll be a group that'll be helping quite a lot as they begin to understand that process and what's all involved in the projects that they have in their neighborhood. So the story that I'm going to share with you today is about community gardens. So this year, as you'll see from the photo, Neighborhood Matching Fund projects supported a community garden in Clare Hills. So the community association applied for the grant, went through the process, and you'll see here, they had amazing support on the build day, lots of community members coming together to make this possible, those who were interested in plots and those who weren't, who just wanted to come out and help with something great in their community. The program has been around for quite some time, but it needed some changes to make it more accessible to the community and grow on that positive aspect that's already been there. So you'll see there are raised beds in this garden, which is something that took some time to explore what that means in our parks for the construction of that and maintenance. time to explore what that means in our parks for the construction of that and maintenance and future of those processes. So, lots of community members coming together, being empowered to do things in their neighborhood and providing impact in our community. So, next we have Nadia coming up to talk.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having us come today. I'm happy to talk to you about my current secondment role as the Neighborhood Development Coordinator with this really awesome team. So, my role specifically focuses on stewarding the implementation of the neighborhood strategy, so I'm focused on the development of new programs and services as outlined in the strategy specifically. So, a couple of things on the, the long list that we each have to do, for me, anyway, is collaborating with the community on initiatives that enhance neighborhood community programs. I think a good recent example of this would be in your ward, Councillor Vasek, the group that was interested in the community safety and the initiative that they wanted to start, so working with them directly to find a solution that met their needs. Developing and strengthening relationships with internal and external partners, so working closely with the post-secondary institutions through Town and Gown on the Cohesion Working Group, and with homes associations, as well as the many internal staff that help to support all of the initiatives that we do. Developing and implementing new programs, services and support, and so that, a good example of that would be the new Mini Grants for Neighbors program, and I'm going to speak to that in a little bit more detail in the monitoring and reporting on the progress piece in my next presentation. And some current and upcoming projects or initiatives, we will be hosting the first ever Neighborhood Summit in Waterloo on November the 2nd at CG. It'll be a great opportunity for the community to come and hear some aspirational stories, to have some workshops and some time for networking and gather some information from community partners and internal city services, so I encourage you to come and join us and specifically to invite all of the residents in your wards and across the community to come because it's going to be a really great day. I'm also working with the Neighborhood Leaders Team, which is a direct recommendation in the strategy. So, we have 13 members on this team. They represent folks from every ward across the city, and we are getting some fantastic feedback from them about upcoming projects that we will be working on for the end of this year and the beginning of 2020. Their guidance has specifically shaped the Neighborhood Summit, and a lot of the recommendations that we've made are, that they've made are built into the format of the day and how we should approach the various parts of it. Looking forward to 2020, one of the big projects on the list, several of them are quite large, actually, is to develop a neighborhood assets map, so to look at the public and private spaces that are available indoor so that folks can work on their events or programs and activities year-round, not just focused on the spring and summer months. So, we have gotten some feedback from the Neighborhood Leaders Team about directions to take that in, and we will be working towards that in the spring. Looking at implementing an event equipment program, so we already have tents and tables that we lent to neighborhood groups for this year, but looking at things like giant games, and there was an ask for first aid kits, those kinds of things, and we'll be, we'll be rolling out a program that can accommodate those needs as well. There is always a need for more and better communication, and we will be looking at developing some online tools and resources. We'll be exploring that idea with the Neighborhood Leaders Team at their next meeting in November. And then, ongoing supportive mini-grant projects are high on the list at this point in time. And my community impact story is about the power of possibilities. When we decided to launch the Neighborhood E-News this spring, it was promoted in different ways, and I had a member of the community email me and say, "Oh, you really need to call this person," and they gave me their phone number, "they're really interested in something that you've, some information that you've put out." So, I called them, and it turns out that they're active community organizers that have organized their annual street barbecue for 25 years, and we didn't know about it until they approached us, and that was very exciting. We gave them some funds through the Mini Grants for Neighbors to support the 25-year celebration, and they were ecstatic to have members of council attend and for Minister Chager to attend as well. And then, we had the Food and Funds Event a couple of weeks ago, and they came to that, and they are ecstatic and excited to come up with a program idea that is outside of what they've done for the last 25 years because the street barbecue is no longer enough. So, that's really great. And then, pictured here are some of the great things that have happened this year. Every event that has food, very popular. Pictures of some of the tents that we, we purchased this year, available for neighborhood use at different events, and then, community street barbecue, and then, the images of the toolkits that have been produced so far this year with more to come. And I will turn it over to Nadia.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me, and all of us, rather. My name is Nadia. I am a policy analyst. As Beth mentioned, I'm the newest member of the team. I've been with the team for about two months now. So, the, oh, there we go. So, there's a couple of main objectives to my role, and that's to provide policy, planning, evaluation, analysis, support to two of our divisions, which is the Community Programming and Outreach Division, and also the Recreation Services Division. And additionally, there's an objective in my role to build collaborative relationships with internal and external stakeholders. So, a lot of times, I will look to internal colleagues in the city for their expertise when developing or revising policy. I'll look to external colleagues or external stakeholders such as region staff members for information or for some more information on best practices in other areas, and then, I will also, in my role, work with different community members and community groups to really understand the impacts of the policies and programs I may be working on. So, some of my responsibilities include leading and developing program policies on a wide range of issues. Some previous issues that have emerged in this role include ice allocation, different community grants, and also respectful behavior policies. Additionally, in my role, I prepare research reports, discussion papers, council reports, and briefing notes on different policy issues. And I will also work to evaluate and review existing programs and services and make recommendations for future change. My role can also involve leading some strategic planning projects, which can include things like outdoor sports field, the culture plan, and also the neighborhood strategy that's been mentioned already by some of my other wonderful team members. So, some current and upcoming projects that I'm working on include the cash grants policy revision, which is on the agenda for later today. There's some other policy revisions and developments that will be happening later on, including the municipal alcohol policy, pool allocation policy, and facility rental discount policy. And then, I'm also working on a recreation services program review, and this is really in preparation for the planned expansion of WMRC and to ensure that when we're planning senior programming and services, that it's working well with this planned expansion. So, I haven't been in this role too, too long, so I don't have too many community impact stories to share with you just as yet, but part of this role involves supporting other team members that you've heard from already and that you will hear from with, by developing and revising policies for funds such as Neighborhood Matching Fund and Community Cash Grants Policy. And through my role, I can really help ensure that these policies are continually improved. Staff members are always receiving feedback from different people associated with these funds, and it's how they can, the process can be better streamlined. And by revising the policy, you can really ensure that anyone who is applying for these funds or interested in applying is understanding what, you know, what's involved in the process, who can apply for funds, and just bringing greater transparency to the entire process. So, I don't have as interesting of pictures as some of my coworkers, but just to give you a little bit of sense of what has evolved, there is a little charter explaining policy development, and also strategic planning, which is part of my role, and of course, I hope that in my role, that I'm always consulting with the public to make sure that the issues that are important to them are being represented. I think with that, I'll turn it back over to Beth.
Thanks, Nadia. I'm going to speak a little bit about inclusion services for persons with disabilities. At the start of the presentation, I noted that these services are provided to Waterloo residents through a purchase of service agreement with the city of Kitchener. We've had this agreement in place in one form or another for 20-plus years, and my counterpart at Kitchener, Loriann Polubeski, manages that, those services, along with her team members who are here today. So, as I mentioned, I have here today Lolita, who is responsible for compliance with AODA legislation, and Nadine and Marina, who do a lot of work around making our recreation services accessible to persons with disabilities, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that. And one of the reasons that we work with City of Kitchener on deliver of these services is that there's a lot of expertise that these three women bring to us, and so, we're able to, you know, take advantage of the expertise that they have to deliver services in an effective and efficient way. And through that purchase of service agreement, we provide funding, we transfer funding to Kitchener to provide those services on behalf of, for citizens in Waterloo. So, the objective of inclusion services is to provide inclusive opportunities for Waterloo residents to fully access and enjoy programs, services, facilities, parks and trails. So, it's quite a, a range of things that this team is doing. As I mentioned, Lolita's focus is on corporate compliance with standards within the Accessibility for Interarians with Disabilities Act, and that includes everything from customer service standards to public spaces, to communications. So, it's a broad range of issues that she's helping to advise staff on. She provides that service through consultation, so staff that are needing advice on how to improve the accessibility of a project that they're working on will come to Lolita and to GRAC, which I'll speak about in a minute, through training, so it might be training around customer service and accessible customer service, developing policy, and our annual AODA report around how we're doing in terms of responding to these standards, and around barrier-free design. So, one of the things that Lolita and the community members that she works with through GRAC are doing a lot of these days is going out to advise on capital projects that we have on the go, whether it's the elevator at the Button Factory, washroom design at the Waterloo Memorial Complex expansion. They're there to, on the ground, sort of looking at drawings, looking at the site to see how we can ensure that we are providing an accessible space. Lolita also facilitates and supports the Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee, which is a committee for all of the municipalities in the region, with the exception of Cambridge, providing advice and direction related to accessibility issues. And then, Nadine and Marina are really focused on the, the recreation and making recreation accessible. So, they look at how, they speak with staff and to residents about how can we make a program accessible for a particular individual, or how can we make a program accessible to a broader range of individuals with different needs. They also provide some specialized recreation and leisure program delivery. So, Kitchener provides a youth camp, which is a bit of a demographic where, you know, typically, there might not be camps for the older-aged youth, but this is a really popular program where the parents are extremely keen and the, and the youth that are participating are extremely keen on the opportunity, fills up quite quick every year. And then, we also provide, through the Every Kid Counts Program, one-on-one supports to children who are interested in being in city camps. So, they might need someone to provide a one-on-one support to allow them to participate and take as much advantage of the programming that's happening in that camp as possible. And so, that's one of the other things that we hire, when I say we, I mean, Nadine hires these staff, trains them and sets them up to support those youth. And then, also providing just advice to our staff who are designing recreation programs on how to make those programs more accessible, how to create opportunities for inclusion. Some of the projects that are coming up right now, as mentioned, there's a lot of capital projects going on at the city right now that are really doing a good job of trying to be inclusive. So, the WMRC expansion, Lolita's been advising on the AMCC, the Albert McCormick Community Center Gathering Space, work on the exterior of the building, the Waterloo Park, Waterplay Area has also been connecting on this focus. And one of the other kind of pieces that we're, we've been having discussion on is the increasing need from the community, the increasing numbers of parents and youth, or children that are coming forward, looking for that one-on-one support through our Every Kid Counts Program, and how do we continue to respond to that, that need to make our camps inclusive? Just this last year, there were 37 individuals in Waterloo camps that asked for one-on-one support, and we provided support for 67 weeks. Every year, that number is going up and up and up. There was a time where I think Nadine would probably say I had about 10 one-on-one workers. This year, there was 37 one-on-one workers. So, it's definitely a growing demand in the community, and I'm going to turn it over to Nadine to share a story with you.
All right. So, I think that, hi, my name's Nadine. I think I have one of the best jobs in the whole world because I get to make camp and recreation possible for folks, children, youth, adults that may not otherwise get to. A big part of this work is obviously our summer camps, and the city of Waterloo offers a lot of great opportunities for children in Waterloo to experience camp. So, a few of the pictures up here are of our staff team this year of 37 with three summer coordinators that helped me make the magic happen experiencing camp, and I think smiles speak much louder than stats and words, so I wanted to make sure I got a few of those up there. The impact story that I wanted to share with you guys is, I'm very fortunate to have a lot of conversations and build a lot of relationships with a lot of different families in Kitchener and Waterloo, and one of the great things is the gratefulness and the appreciation that comes through from the kids and from their families, and sometimes in email format. And so, I'm going to share one of the emails that I got this more, or this summer from a family, and as a bit of background or context, this family was new to us this year, and there was a lot of anxiety, I guess, or hesitancy because there's been a lot of unsuccessful attempts, I guess, at recreation, and a lot of barriers and a lot of frustration and sadness and anxiety around that. So, we had a lot of conversations leading up to summer to help this kiddo experience a successful and fun week of camp, so I'm going to share this one with you guys. So, it says, "Dear Nadine, I would just like to reflect a little bit on Ian's week at camp. First of all, he was there 9:30 to 4:30, which is seven hours, and all in all, he did pretty good. Not without a few bumps in the road, but Cameron knew where and when to divert Ian, and they had a good time together. Every day except one, did Ian want to go to camp, and the other day by the end of the time he, by the, the other day by the time he arrived, he was glad to be there, again because of Cameron. Ian came home on Thursday night after I told him Friday was his last day. He asked me if he could draw a picture for Cameron, and he did of the two of them playing basketball. I need to tell you that every night Ian came home, he was smiling and laughing all the time and would say to Cameron, 'See you tomorrow.' The most important thing here is that I have not seen Ian smile, laugh, or more importantly, see Ian engaged in talk as freely as he did with Cameron. see Ian engaged in talk as freely as he did with Cameron. I know that Ian felt very relaxed around Cameron, and that is why Ian had a good week. Cameron has a very special gift with kids, and he should be very proud of himself. There's not too many guys that do this for the summer, and I hope he will maybe consider it a full-time job. You have a very special person in Cameron working for you, and the kids, you and the kids that he will be with will have the best time with him. Thanks, Cameron, for everything you did to make Ian's week successful." So it's emails like this that really are heartwarming to me because going into this summer, we had a lot of conversations, like I said, with other service providers, too, that were hesitant and nervous about what Ian's experience would be like this summer. So there were definitely tears at the end of the week from staff and from grandma as well. And this is what makes my job so special and the staff that provide the support so special. And yes, I'm happy to share that with you guys today. Yeah.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Lynn, who's our last presenter.
Good afternoon. My name is Lynn, and I help work with Beth's team to make some of the programs that we offer here at the city possible. So some of my objectives, my objective is to assist our community organizations and families through the Fee Assistance, PAL Card, and Cash Grant Program and general administration. So some of my responsibilities include, the first one is Fee Assistance Leisure Access Program. And this is a program for financially disadvantaged individuals and families to enable them to participate in our City of Waterloo direct programs and associated minor sports and arts programs. The criteria for the program is based on total number of people in a family and the total gross income for all adults in the family, and we use the low-income cutoffs for Waterloo region. The program runs from December 1st of one year to the end of November of the following year. Successful candidates receive a $300 line of credit per person per year, which is placed as a line of credit on ACTIVE, which is our registration program. As the candidates register for programs, the registration fee is drawn down from their line of credit. The City of Waterloo also partners with the Canadian Tire Jump Start Program, which provides assistance to residents of Waterloo for affiliated minor sports programs, and they also cover for-profit organizations. Anyone who has applied online to Jump Start and has a City of Waterloo postal code will come to me via email, and I've got that application for Jump Start. This enables some of our City of Waterloo residents to register for programs that our own Fee Assistance Program would not cover. Example would be the for-profit organizations. The City of Waterloo also partners with the YMCA Fee Assist Program. And anyone who has applied online to the YMCA Fee Assist Program and has been color-coded by them means that they will qualify for our City of Waterloo Fee Assistance Program. Participants simply have to give me their PIN number. I go into the back end of that portal, and I retrieve their family and financial information, attach it to our application, and then they're put in the queue to be reviewed. We actually partnered with the YMCA program just to make it simpler for families so that they don't have to be walking around and running around with all their personal information and financials. Also, I help to administer the PAL Card Program, which is a personal attendant for leisure access program. It's a program that allows individuals with a disability to be accompanied by a personal attendant so that they may have the help they need to participate in recreation and leisure programs and services offered by the municipality and our PAL Card partners. The personal attendant is not charged for the program fee, the personal attendant is not charged for the program fee and is present for the sole purpose of assisting the person with a disability. Our PAL Card, our PAL Card partners are the City of Kitchener, City of Cambridge, City of Guelph, and Township of Waterloo, and we all recognize each other's PAL Cards. I also help to administer the Community Cash Grants Program. This program is for affiliated and not affiliated, not-for-profit organizations who fall under the categories of arts and culture, festivals and events, neighborhoods and community groups, and sports, and recreation, who can apply to the City of Waterloo for operating and project funding. The call for grants is the first Wednesday after Thanksgiving each year, and the deadline for applications is the first Tuesday of December each year. I ensure that the call for grants is placed on the City of Waterloo Facebook page, our website, it's tweeted out to the municipality. We receive applications, I receive the applications and coordinate the information for the volunteers. And I go to the grant meetings, take the minutes, and ensure that the candidates receive the communication of the decisions of the committee. The affiliation service agreements, I help with the staff liaisons who have entered organizations into the affiliation service agreement, keep track of the agreements. I track the contact information, mailing addresses, email addresses, and ensure that all the affiliated organizations who receive foundational funding each year receive their foundational funding check. And these are the organizations that we send out an email to see if they want to apply for a community grant. Upcoming projects or initiatives, the Fee Assistance process improvements. This involves streamlining internal administration processes and reporting to the affiliated minor sport and art organizations on the use of funding through the Fee Assistance Program, making it easier for the sport organizations to track participants using Fee Assistance as well as making it easier for the participants because they're not in our program registration. So there's a lot of different Excel spreadsheets, so we're trying to streamline that process to make it a little bit easier. And also the launch of the 22, the 2020 Community Cash Grants, we're gearing up for that, which will be going live next Wednesday, October the 16th. My community impact story is, so far this year, we have 387 families who were awarded a Fee Assistance Line of Credit, which means that 1,148-plus children, adults, seniors were able to participate in City of Waterloo direct program and/or our affiliated minor sports and culture programs. Forty-eight successful community organizations received funding through the Community Cash Grant Program last year, and 51 PAL Cards were awarded to children, seniors, and adults so far this year. I do have an impact story that I would like to share with you that happened this year. Like Nadine said, I have a great job because I see the effects and how it helps families be able to have children participate in recreational programming that they otherwise wouldn't be able to without the Fee Assistance Program. So this year, a mom and dad who recently immigrated to Canada, and English was not their first language, and it was a struggle, they brought their 10-year-old daughter to the front counter to say thank you for making it possible for their child to participate in an art program. The little girl was there, and she told me she enjoyed the program immensely. She used, she learned how to use all different types of medium, media, and she was very excited about the program. And the program coordinator suggested that she should look around in the community and possibly think about entering into an art competition. Well, a few weeks later, she saw something, I'm not sure where, and she participated, and she won. And part of that prize was $1,000. So the $1,000 to this new immigrant family was huge. They were extremely excited, and if she was, if she wins this, now she goes to Nationals, and if she wins Nationals, she could win a prize to France. So there were a lot of tears at the counter when they came and told me, a lot of hugs, and it made all the work that I do all that much more meaningful. So these pictures here show some of the programs that people get to participate in, some of the children. Adults can apply, too. We don't have any pictures of the adults, but there's swimming, there's basketball, there's football there, soccer, but there's a whole host of programs with 35 affiliated minor sports organizations. So there's programs such as Darren said, KW Skating Club, KW Gymnastics, Water Polo, there's a host of programs.
Thank you, Lynn. So that's a little bit about our team, Community Neighborhood Services. As you can see, we're a very diverse team. Everybody's got kind of a different job than everybody else on the team. But I think there's a couple of things we have in common. We're really focused on trying to make this a great community to live in. We're focused on trying to help people solve their own challenges with just a little bit of help from us. And we're very focused on embracing opportunities that come our way. So one of the things our commissioner says is that your day is not your own. And I think that is extremely true for this team. There is hardly a day that goes the way I think it's going to go, because every day there's something that happens that we didn't expect, or an opportunity that we just can't not take. And this is a, this is a team of people who readily embrace those opportunities. If you come down to our office, you will find that is either a hub of activity with multiple conversations going on, trying to problem-solve, or you come down and there's literally none of us there because we're all out in the community, working with a community group. So I'd encourage you to come down sometime when we are there. Just as a conclusion, I just wanted to say how much a pleasure it has been in my nine months so far in this role to both lead and support this team, but also a privilege because I learn something new from them every day, and I really get the opportunity to see every day the kinds of stories that they shared with you. That happens every day in our office. I get to see those really tangible things that they're working on come to fruition. So it's a great privilege. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth, and to your team. I know that, I see some hands here, so I did see the mayor first and then councillor Bonagor.
Well, I think this is really a lesson for all of us at the city here, sitting at the council table, we think with the neighborhood strategy that we went through last, last term of council, and then the funding of it, and the continued funding of it through this term of council. And when you drop down there to the team, and Beth and I were chatting, I realized we had to wait for Nadia to come on board, but, you know, I was just saying, wow, it's a whole new team. Not saying that this stuff wasn't ever done before, but it's a brand-new team. And you really see the neighborhood strategy unveiling itself in real time through all the work that we did. That's why I was hoping we could find a time here where we all had time to sit and listen and see the people behind the magic that's happening here. And Nadia, maybe if you're here another year, you'll get some pictures of people smiling, doing policy work. I hope so, so I will see that. But, you know, I think it's, to quote Amy, "a really awesome team," and just something that's put together, and you can see proud parent Jim there, sitting, enjoying, enjoying every minute of it, happy that he doesn't have to speak and everything. So anyway, thank you to the team, and like I said, I just wanted to have this education session for the councils, so we all know there's lots going on that we don't necessarily hear from. And like I said, it is sort of a brand-new team.
Great. Thank you, councillor Bonagor.
Thank you through you, Chair Freeman. I love this strategy. I was lucky enough to be on the resident panel that was part of the development of the strategy, so I've been cheering you on for a long time from the background, and now I get to do it from up here. But I just had a question, just for my own information. When you were talking about the Fee Assistance and the number of families that qualified for that Fee Assistance, was that every family that applied and qualified for it was able to get the assistance, or was some people turned away?
Through you, Chair Freeman, some, some people would not meet the criteria. I do get people who have four in a family and the gross income is like $150,000, and I'm like, no, you don't qualify. Some would be people who don't live in the City of Waterloo, so they wouldn't qualify. But those are the people who did qualify.
So that just, so we weren't, so people who qualified, everyone was able to get that assistance?
Yes.
Awesome. I was just wanting to make sure, just so I know where we stand. But I just want to thank you all for what you're doing. It's early days, it's great work, keep it up.
Councillor Hamner.
Thank you through you, Chair Freeman. This is more a comment than actually a question. I think this, this group has been our best-kept secret for I don't know how long. I've had the privilege of working with three of our, our sports organizations, and the Fee Assistance Program in particular, I can go back 20 years on stories that have come from that, and also the willingness of the team to be working with the sports affiliation groups to figure out ways so that no child in the City of Waterloo is denied playing a sport or being active. So congratulations for your efforts and continued ways to figure out how we can make sure everybody's doing what they want to do. So thank you.
I just had one comment. One of the things I was thinking about when Pamela was talking, you had mentioned about the Red Scarf Project and trying to get that exhibit back. And when I was at the Potter's Workshop, they were explaining to me that they have a small showcase inside their door of traveling works and pieces that they purchased and added to their collection. And I didn't think too many people got a chance to see them there, and wondered whether we could allocate some small gallery spot either in one of our rec centers or here in City Hall that they could rotate some of their collection through. And so I'll just leave it with you. I encourage them to call you, but I think it would be really great to see.
Through you, Chair Freeman, we do have some space for those kinds of things, but I think one of the things we're looking at with the WMRC expansion is creating other opportunities. So it's about having the right kind of space where things were protected, we don't want anything to be damaged. But I think there, there are more opportunities to come for those kinds of exhibits.
Because I know the glass cases here at City Hall, we rotate things through them, so I didn't know whether we could allocate even one of those glass cases. They just need a small, small space, but. And thank you so much. I know that we're going to hear more about the neighborhood strategy implementation, so I think holding questions on the neighborhood strategy till after that presentation kind of makes sense. So there's no consent motion, and we are on to staff reports. And so we're turning back to Amy to, to work with us on this next report, which is People, Resources, and Processes: Progress on the Neighborhood Strategy Implementation for Year One.
I don't come here too often, but when I do, I'm always happy to share some great information, so I will continue that trend this afternoon and give you an update from the 2018-2019 implementation of the Neighborhood Strategy. So a quick recap, I'm sure many of you have read this, and if you haven't read it recently, this is a good reminder. The vision from the Neighborhood Strategy is that Waterloo is a city of caring, vibrant, engaged neighborhoods where everyone belongs. We're really focusing on that belonging piece in the work that we're doing. And there are three goals in the strategy, encouraging neighborhood interactions, empowering neighbors to lead, and committing to a corporate city culture that supports neighborhood-led and delivered initiatives. There are six guiding principles that contribute to the 18 recommendations that are in the strategy. I'm not going to go into them into too much detail, but I think at the root of everything is that residents and neighborhood volunteers are, are great, right? We have some tremendous and committed folks that do a lot of great work and share a lot of their time and energy and passion with their neighborhoods to help create a sense of belonging and to create a sense of life is great here. Every resident is a neighbor and can build, can help build strong neighborhoods. Neighborhoods come in many forms. They are the traditional outlined areas that happen when developments are made, or they are folks that live on one particular street, or crescent, or court, and sometimes they are vertical, and they are folks that live in a particular building or setting. Neighborhood community buildings should be resident-led. Beth, Julie, and I all have brilliant ideas, but our ideas are not nearly as great as what comes from the neighborhoods, and we're happy to support all of the great and zany and wonky ideas that come forward. Neighborhood community buildings should aim to be inclusive, inclusive of all walks of life, whether that's age, ethnicity, gender, or ability. Everyone should feel like they are part of the community. City departments must work together to City departments must work together to support resident-led and delivered neighborhood initiatives. This is a great opportunity for collaboration. We are forging and strengthening new relationships between departments to come up with good solutions, to support projects that come forward from neighborhoods. And collaboration with community partners is key to achieving the strategy's vision. We couldn't do it without some of our key institutional and community partners, such as the post-secondary institutions and the Volunteer Action Center. I've interspersed some of the, the slides with some great pictures of events that are happening. Again, food seems to be a theme. We have lots of pictures of people getting together over food. So in Goal Area 1, there were four action areas that were put forward for implementation for this year, and they are all underway. I'm going to touch on one in each area, and then if there are particular questions about things at the end, you're welcome to ask them. I think one of the exciting things for us is determining which existing neighborhood supports are available to homes associations, and working with them. We have a meeting coming up at the end of October with all of the homes associations to clarify what is available to neighborhood associations and homes associations. The various programs, such as outdoor ranks or community gardens, as well as community cash grants, and then the in-kind supports, such as lending of tents and that kind of thing, that, that they would be able to access. But all of those action areas are underway. In Goal 2, Empowering Neighbors to Lead, we have a series of things that have been completed. And we also have other pieces that are still underway. I think one of the, the most exciting projects from my end is working with the Neighborhood Leaders Team. It was called the Neighborhood Leaders Committee, formerly in the Neighborhood Strategy. But we felt like "team" was more important because of the cohesive nature of the work that they're doing. I meet with them every two months, and they are really passionate and very excited. We, we knew that it was a great group when we got together with them at the first meeting, and they didn't want to stop networking to work on the projects. So there's a lot of cohesiveness there, and they've already shared some really great ideas to move several of our projects forward. And then Goal 3, Committing to a Corporate City Culture That Supports Neighborhood-Led and Delivered Initiatives. These are all underway and ongoing. I would say one of our, our biggest successes thus far is working on streamlining processes and revisiting policies, policies to make neighborhood projects easier. And a great example of that would be the new open burn toolkit and opportunity. As you know, doing open burns is a, is a complicated thing. And we were happy to work with fire services to develop a way to make that happen, and create a kit that people can pick up and use in their neighborhoods for the events that fall in that category. Another great event that was supported by the MiniGrants, Neighbors Gathering in a condo corporation that hadn't hardly got together between four buildings for a long time. So they wanted to reinvigorate that, and did. Some successes overall from 2018 and 2019. Again, the committed and engaged Neighborhood Leaders Team, they're awesome. If you have an opportunity to come out to one of their meetings, I really encourage you to do that. Distribution of the funding resources to the Volunteer Action Center and neighborhood associations following budget approval. This small influx of cash has already made a great difference to the work that these groups are doing. The Volunteer Action Center in building the capacity of neighborhoods to support volunteers, and the work that they're doing, and the neighborhood associations to give them just a little bit more money to do a couple more things each year. It's really helpful. With the additional funds that council offered with the approval of the Neighborhood Strategy last year, we purchased event tents, and they were very well-used this year. We were happy to have them leave the shed and come back on a regular basis. And we think that that will only continue to grow. Since the launch of the MiniGrants program earlier this spring, we've had eight completed projects. And we have a number of others that are in the works to be completed. Again, $300 is seed money, is a very small amount of funds to create capacity and build opportunity for people to get excited to do more things. The development of toolkits to assist with resident-led activities, there are five currently. Three that are printed, and two that are about to be printed. And we have several more ideas for more things that create sort of a guide for people to know what they need to do and how to access services on their own. They're always welcome to call us, but sometimes folks are looking for other ways of, of getting information. The new Neighborhood-Focused Monthly E-Blast is a great way for us to communicate information to the community and share information from our third-party partners. The new community garden installed in Claire Hills, and the streamlining of the community garden process to allow us to support the volunteers in, in a different way from a community services lens. And then updating processes and increasing funding for further neighborhood matching fund support. There's so many great projects that are coming forward, and we're really, really excited about spending all of that money this year. And another great neighborhood gathering where folks are engaged in projects and activities. Maybe not with food in this picture, but there is probably food there. Some challenges, with success comes challenge. But they're all things that we have been able to work on, and will continue to do so. I have joined the Cohesion Working Group, and we have refocused that part of Town and Gown to be more action-focused. And we will be involving neighborhoods, neighborhood representatives with a high concentration of post-secondary residents to really focus on neighborhood strategy-delivered projects. We are also working with our counterparts in a number of divisions to overcome barriers to implementing community development projects, and understanding the benefits of being resident-led. Again, to draw on the same example, the, the open burn is a real win in that area. And finally, finding new and engaging and ongoing ways to communicate information to the broader community. It's always a challenge to get the word out there, but we are trying really hard to sort of push the information out in different ways, especially to student populations. Another great example of an event, and our tent in the background. And finally, opportunities for Year 2. We are really going to work on strengthening relationships with homes associations and getting them the supports and resources to do even more great things than they already do. Building on the success of the First Neighborhood Summit, we are putting it together for the end of this year. And we will revisit that with the Neighborhood Leaders Team and feedback from folks that attend to see if it maybe would fit better at a different time of year, or maybe the format needs to change, that kind of thing. But really looking for the impact of that to be not about how many people attend, but the, the ability for people to build capacity or to gain resources that would help them move projects forward. And then increasing support for resident-led events and activities through the equipment program that I talked about, continuing the MiniGrants program, more toolkits, and then working on our volunteer recognition. So the next steps, the Neighborhood Summit. You're going to hear a lot about this from me, even outside of today. November the 2nd, it's less than a month away at CG, it's going to be a great time. Supporting, support for neighborhood projects and parks, so increasing outdoor ranks and community gardens. We're looking to grow those programs significantly. Working on the asset mapping that I talked about in my last couple of slides in the previous presentation. Looking at indoor spaces so that we can create a tool for folks that, you know, maybe they're on their phone, and they're looking for a space because it started to rain, and what can they access in a short period of time that's affordable and flexible within a 10-minute walking radius from where they are. We'll be looking at improving access to schools. That may be a bit of a challenge, but we're hoping that we can focus on some priority areas that actually has a lot of demand or need for that kind of thing. Implementing the Event Equipment Program. We've had some great conversation with the Neighborhood Leaders Team about maybe we don't need to buy a whole lot of stuff. Maybe we can create cross-inventories, or work with the KW Library of Things, and have memberships there so that we are able to access those resources without needing to procure things and then store them. Developing online tools and resources, maybe it's an app, maybe it's a website. We're not sure yet, but we will be talking at great length about what makes sense for that. And then touching on a little bit of what Shane mentioned earlier about communication and education and community collaboration. We're going to be working with bylaw to do some enhanced proactive bylaw education. So, not only with students, but with the community about issues that arise, and how they are best able to manage them on their own without needing a lot of help. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much. And it's really exciting to see how the, the strategy is being implemented throughout the community and being embraced. With that, I'd like to turn to council, see if there's any questions for Amy. Councillor Vee.
Through you, Chair Freeman, thank you. I've seen a lot of great stuff happening in, in Ward 3, thanks to Julie. And our neighborhood associations love working with her, so thank you. We have a message board out in Pine Brook Park, and, and the community wants a garden. And it's totally community-driven. It came from the community, and they've done all the research and worked with Julie. But my question is about the open burn toolkit, is that ready yet?
Okay, yeah, so through you, Chair, the toolkit is ready. We're just waiting for, for it to be AODA compliant, to go on the website. Claire Hills actually used the new fire pit on September 28th at their event, tried it out. And they said they were a little nervous when they saw what it looked like, and they tried it out, and they loved it. So that is currently in place, and we'll be rolling that out. Mary Allen Neighborhood Association has an event coming up in December that they'll be using it. And then in spring, we'll be making sure people are aware that that opportunity exists to do that.
Awesome. Thank you. That's all.
Councillor Vasek.
Thanks through you, Chair Freeman. I just think your team is doing such great things. And I'm getting such great feedback from people who are working with you similarly to councillor Vee. And I am relying on you a lot to do things in neighborhoods that I don't know how else they can get done at a city, because it's such a giant organization. And I'm a community developer, so this is like, it's a great route for me to start understanding city processes better, too. So thank you for all your help. I was just curious if you could send us a schedule of the leaders' meetings? And, and maybe if we could sign up for one, just to attend one would be great.
I can. It came out at the first meeting that they were really interested in having the council rep of the ward that they were going to be meeting in attend. And so, we had good success with that at the September meeting, councillor Bodley attended. The next meeting is November the 13th, and I've approached a few people. And there's, there's lots of conflicts that day, it seems. So that if there is someone that's available, that would be great. The next two meetings, one in January will be held at Moses Springer. And the one in March will be held at the Rec Complex. And they're always the second Wednesday in the evening.
You'll send that out?
Yep.
Yes, I really wanted to go to the November 13th, but I have a conflict. It's in my ward, I really wanted to make it work. I have another commitment. Oh, I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can. I don't click a pen, though, the way that councillor McLean used to. Councillor Hamner.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, Chair Freeman. I would agree with the comments that have been made by my colleagues. Your group is doing an amazing job, and I'm really happy to see the, improving the relationship or enhancing the relationship with the home associations, because that's what I have more of. So Ward 1 would be happy to host somewhere. We need the school affiliations to work first, because we don't have a place to meet within the ward. So that I would, however I can be supportive of that, I would like, like to be. So keep it up.
I had a question with regard to the November 2nd event.
Yes.
On the Saturday, I, I just didn't know whether there was any conflicts with clerks if council wanted to attend that event. Whether we just set an agenda for it and make it public.
Yeah, if, if it's a social event and it's not advancing the business of the city, then it's not a problem. If it's advancing the business of the city in any way, or if it's something that'll be coming back to council, then we would suggest staying under coram.
Is it a social event?
There are definitely networking aspects of it. I think the focus will be on helping residents understand the opportunities that are available to them, giving them ideas around what kinds of things they can do in their neighborhood. Learning about, you know, bylaw might be there. So there is certainly a city element to it. I'm kind of looking at Julie to say if this is advancing the work of the city or not.
It, it sounds like it's an education social event, so I don't think there's an issue.
And I, I thought I'd share, since councillor Hamner mentioned about the school boards, I know that that's been something that we've been working on for a long time, not just indoor space, but also outdoor space. And in Eastbridge, I will let you know, they've been very successful in getting meeting space in some of the retirement communities. And, okay. So, yeah, and grocery stores. So, was there any other questions first off for Amy? Seeing none, thank you so much for all your work, yeah?
Just as a, a comment around working with the school boards, there's already work going on through a joint use committee around the outdoor spaces. And we've already had some discussions around indoor spaces. So that work will continue. But I think this is also part of the asset mapping piece that Amy spoke to, that we want to dig up the spots in church basements, or coffee shops, or businesses that will let you borrow their boardroom, or fire halls. As our fire chief has very kindly made note, that we might be able to use some of those spaces. That there are spaces, we just have to find them. And once we find them and document them, it'll be easier for people to then know how to access them. So that's part of the work we want to do next year.
Thank you. Okay. That's, thank you, seconded by councillor Vee. All in favor? And that's carried unanimously. We are on to the revised community cash grants policy. So Nadia. And so the policy is in your folder. Was there a presentation on this, or, okay, so is, any questions on that? Yep, councillor Bonagor.
Through you, Chair Freeman. I just had one question. It says that you're changing the process for decide, like deciding who receives a grant. You're switching away from numerical scoring to assess the applications. What will you be using instead?
Through you, Chair Freeman. So a number of years ago, when we first put the cash grants policy into place, we envisioned a numerical process. So, and this is what's typically done by major granters. And, you know, and you have to get a, sort of a score of 75% or something to continue on in the process. What we found in working with our community, with our Community Cash Grants Committee, which is a council-appointed committee, is that we have a lot of grassroots groups. They might struggle with grant applications, but have a really great idea. So we don't want to take a lot of points off because they didn't say this really eloquently, or they missed something, or the finances were hard to kind of understand. And also, I think historically, the grant program has, as long as you meet the eligibility criteria, we then assess the quality, in a more subjective way, I guess, of your proposal, and what is the funding you really need to make it happen. So almost everyone that applies, if you meet the criteria, you're getting some amount of funding. It's just how much funding. And so the scoring wasn't really taking, wasn't really helping us make a decision. It was much more the discussion that happens at the committee table, looking at the documents that the groups have put in. So I think that's, the committee had sort of said, we're not using the scores to help us make a decision. Can we focus more of our effort on really looking at the application instead? And so that's why we're proposing that shift.
And then will you be kind of monitoring that to see how successful that new approach is?
Yeah, I think this will be our first time not having the scoring process in a number of years. And so we always, at our last meeting, sort of reflect with the committee about what, what well, what didn't go well, what went well, what didn't go well, what can we do better next year. So if we find it wasn't helpful, if it was a challenge to not have scores, we could potentially move back to that.
And Councilor Vassek.
Through you, Chair Freeman. I was just hoping you could speak a little bit more. I know we chatted by email, but a little bit more about what it would look like to work with, or what it does look like to work with the Kitchener Waterloo Community Foundation because they do a lot of this sort of evaluation of their granting processes too. So how do you work together and how could you work together moving forward?
So in my role, since I've become manager, I've met with KW Community Foundation a number of times. I think one of the things we're trying to work on is looking for opportunities to help each other out. So KW Community Foundation has actually provided us funding in 18 and 19. In 18, we directed that funding towards the cash grant program. In 19, we're directing the funding towards the Neighborhood Matching Fund Program. And part of the reason that they were interested in funding us is because there are things that we can fund that they cannot. So their requirements are that you have an official board, that you're a registered charity. We can fund things that are a bit more grassroots and don't have necessarily all of those formalities in place. And then at the same time, we're looking to some of their programs where municipalities can be a sponsor of an applicant. So a group that maybe doesn't have some other formalities in an area that we don't provide funding for could apply to a KW Community Foundation grant with us as a sponsor to try to help them meet the criteria that KW Community Foundation requires. So we're actually meeting on the 10th, today's, so this week, to continue some of those discussions about how we can work well together.
Councilor Hamner.
Thank you, Chair Freeman, through you. And Beth, it really is a follow-on to Councilor Bonagor's question about the change in the scoring. Can you just tell us a little bit about the basic criteria and the shift to additional criteria and the rationale behind that?
Certainly. So one of the things we heard from the committee last year, and it's come up before, is that we always receive three or four applications that really don't meet any of the criteria. So the committee has reviewed those in the past and commented, it's clear they don't meet any of the criteria. This is a, this is a grant program about a particular set of things that we fund. This is outside of those things. Why are you bringing this to us? As volunteers, they're questioning, why can't staff just review those and not bring them to the grant table for the review? So this year, we're asking that, that change we made, sort of someone, we've had applicants before who are proposing religious activities or healthcare-related activities, those are outside of the scope of this grant. They might be very valuable things for our community, but they're not for this grant program. So we're just proposing that we don't bring them to the grants committee table, but we would still tell the grant committee that we received them, and here's why they didn't fit the criteria. But we would save the committee the hours of having to review those applications when staff already have.
Thank you. I think the other piece and the reason I wanted to come back to the question, to the question to support yours, is part of the discussion from the debrief last year was also, by splitting the two, it would help with the weighting that was going on because we were spending way too much time on things that just shouldn't even be there. There were other opportunities. So I'm looking forward to the new method. I think it will make a difference in more fruitful, continued fruitful discussion with the committee.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. And in this particular case, the recommendation is to approve the report and the attached policy. So do I have a mover for that? Councilor Hamner, Councilor Vassek, seconds, all in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. So we're on to the extension of the Regional Maintenance Agreement, IPPW 2019-52, prepared by Christine. I don't see Christine, so I trust that Cam's here to answer any questions, if you have any. Otherwise, I'll look for a mover. Moved by Councilor Henry, seconded by Mayor Jaworski. Any comments, questions, all in favor? That's carried unanimously. There's no formal or informal public meetings, no consideration of notice of motion given at a previous meeting. Do we want to do yours as a notice of motion, Mayor, or do it under new business? Okay. There's no notice of motion, no communications and correspondence, no regional information and correspondence, no unfinished business, and under new business, Mayor Jaworski.
Thank you for the Scouts. I'd like somebody to wave notice of motion on the following. Every year, Scouts Canada holds a fundraiser called Apple Day, in which case local scout groups provide apples. In exchange for donations, money from the event is used to improve scouting programs by providing outdoor trips, camping equipment, and training, among other needs. City Waterloo helps with Apple Day by issuing an annual letter to permit local scout groups to hold their fundraiser on city property and outside local retail stores. So if somebody would wave...
Would you like to move that motion?
Well, first I have to see who wants to wave notice of motion.
Well, you can move to wave notice.
I'll...
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, okay, okay. Pick two. Councilor Henry.
All in favor of waving notice motion?
Okay, good.
That's carried unanimously. Julie, you can pick your movers and secunders. And...
Here we go. That permission be granted for the following local scout groups to be on City Waterloo property to hold an Apple Day from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Friday, October 18th, 2019, and from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Saturday, October 19th, 2019. The First Waterloo, the Fourth Waterloo, the Ninth Waterloo, the Tenth Waterloo, the Twenty-first Waterloo, and the First Lexington. Moved by me. Seconded by...
By Councilor Hamner. All in favor? That's carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Any other new business, council? Councilor Vassek?
No particular, like, I was just excited about Culture Days and all of the great things that happened last weekend, and I can't remember if we've had an actual council meeting since then. And I just wanted to, I think we have done this by email because the mayor sent out a thank you to Arts and Culture and Economic Development, but Lumen was fantastic. And then all of the other events that happened that weekend were also remarkable, like the Button Factory's 25th anniversary. There were eight million other things I did that weekend. And anyway, so congratulations to all the team that did that and pulled all the other community events together. It was so well-organized. They had distributed it through the entire Uptown. Nothing was too far, and all the, yeah, it was just perfect. Anyways, great job, everyone.
That, I concur. And, you know, we haven't met either since the climate strike, and I just, I just wanted to, you know, I know that staff really had a strong presence as a part of that, that action, both on keeping people safe and participating, and I wanted to thank them for that and the Public Square team that does all that work. But I just wanted to share with all of you, I had kind of navigated my way towards the entrance to the plaza a bit near Beertown. So I was, it turned out I was actually quite close to the Drum Circle and for the pop-up "Ode to Joy" and all of those pieces. And I just, it brought me to tears, really. And I felt very empowered for the work that we're doing here and the comments that we made together as a council with regard to how we want to advance our things like our transportation master plan, which gives us a really big opportunity to curb greenhouse gas emissions through transportation emissions. And I don't know, I thought, I felt as an elected official empowered to stay the course because a lot of times we only hear a few negative voices in the chambers and, or maybe on talk news. But there was a lot of voices that day, and I just thought it was really amazing. And then I think, yeah, I think you mentioned the other stuff. Was there any other new business, council? Seeing none. Any questions for staff or anything? And then I look for a motion to adjourn this part of the meeting, and then we have a special council meeting. So mover to adjourn, Councilor Henry, Councilor V, all in favor? That's carried unanimously. Move it over to Mayor Jaworski.
Welcome to the City Waterloo Special Council Meeting, Monday, October 7th, 2019. I have disclosure, pecuniary interest in general nature thereof, seeing none. We have two bylaws to enact, including one regarding the chief building official, moved by Councilor Freeman, seconded by Councilor Bodley. All those in favor? I'd now like to ask Mr. Rapp to say a few words.
Certainly, Mayor Jaworski through Chair Freeman. As council may be aware, that last week was a significant, we had a significant event where our chief building official, Mr. Ralph Kaminski, retired from the profession. He's still going to stay involved in the general industry because that's where his passion is. But, and I will mention that on October the 16th, we will be having an event at McCabes recognizing Ralph and his commitment to the community. So I welcome all of council to attend that if they're free. But most importantly, today, with council passing the bylaw that the mayor just spoke about, we have a new chief building official, and that is Mr. Adam Fishbach, who is in the audience and did not know I would be speaking. But Adam has many years of experience outside of the City of Waterloo, but has joined our city probably about three years ago, I'm guessing. And Adam's attitude and his behaviors and his, really his passion to solve and help people will do us very well for the next approximately one year. Adam has all the qualifications needed to perform the chief building role under provincial regulation. So I would welcome council to recognize Adam, who's in the audience, and wish him well for the next approximately 12 months while he fills this role, and then we will be posting the permanent position. I'd also like to acknowledge that Mr. Ormsen has kindly accepted to act in the role of Director of Building Standards to support Adam in his new role. So again, if we can acknowledge those individuals, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. In a moment, we're going to adjourn, but just a reminder, for those whom everybody wants to be, have a picture for Reap Green Solutions in support of the Week for Zero Waste. We'll assume that. We'll assume that. Motion to adjourn. Councilor Hamner, Councilor V, all those in favor, it's all of us, thank you.